Hearing none, I'll look for motion to approve the agenda presented.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, second, I'll say aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries. And I will open up for public comments if there's anyone who would like to discuss anything not on the agenda tonight. Please come forward to the podium.
Are you on the agenda?
Are you, yeah.
Are you carrying the number?
Yeah, you're on for the, for our workshop. Which will follow this.
Okay.
Alright, seeing no one, I'm quoting for public comments, we'll close public comments. And hearing from consent agenda. We need to poll for further discussion. Hearing none, I'll look for motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Motion second. Motion, second, I'll say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. That will take us to six A, one.
Okay, picnic shelter. Okay, so in your packet, on page seventy-seven, is kind of a, kind of a schedule on, a preliminary schedule put together by our, the architect who did the picnic shelter for the, for old schoolhouse park. This was previously approved, the site plan approved with the movement of the Public Works Building on October ninth of last year. And so, kind of the next step is to kind of put this out for bid, advertise for bids, put it out for bid to see what the cost will come in at. And then, at that time, the council can then decide when the costs come in, if that's something they want to proceed with. The one thing that the architect is looking for, so he's looking for approval of this schedule, preliminary schedule, just as kind of like a guidance, this is what would kind of follow, or this is how it would kind of follow once we put it out for bid. The one thing that we need to discuss though is the Public Works Building. That's kind of, if we're going to be moving forward with it, we do have to make kind of a somewhat decision on what's going to happen with that building. Are we going to move it? Can it be taken down in the period of time after the bids are opened and reviewed? And I guess we're just kind of looking, like, for a little bit more, staff is looking for some guidance on what we're going to do with that building. So, yeah, essentially tonight it would be kind of approval, moving forward with the bid, going through the bid process, starting that, and then kind of a discussion on kind of the Public Works Building. And I don't know if Kyle has any, and Kyle, or, we did print out kind of some of the documents, kind of the cost, the bit, the cost of what we thought it would come in around. But Kyle, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No.
Okay.
So the bidding process, where does that, because of minimal cost, I assume to go off the bid, correct?
Right, and, yeah, it would essentially kind of go in the local paper or end on like approved bid sites that kind of reach, I think there's like contractor sites that it can, we kind of can put a like, a bid document out on, so.
The usual suspects, where?
Yeah, yep.
And I, I mean, I'm fine with the preliminary schedule on, so we proceed with the bid. Obviously, I think that goes forward sequentially. Just what's fine if we decide to move that way once we proceed with the bid, so we can, obviously, I think some big discussion once that happens.
Yeah, I think just to kind of get the process moving, that's why we're bringing it to you now, and also, like, I think if you don't get on top of these things, and it's kind of like, if you, if you get into the mid-season, I think it's harder to find good bids on contractors and stuff like that.
Right, understandable. Okay. Kyle, how long, how long will it take to move the building? If we get the bids in and council decides to move forward with this project so we don't delay breaking ground on that, how long will it take you to move the building?
If, I'd have to reach out to the contractor and, but it, as far as moving it, once they get here, there's a lot of, they can have a helping out of the way. It's been a day.
So you think a couple of weeks notice they could have it?
Yeah, 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 if I get on, I'll get on the board. Kind of eating on, if it's a good rule, but I'm kind of getting paid out, so.
Doesn't seem worthwhile to move it if we're not able to move it. Correct.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Right. A little discussion on the night of April. On the similar night.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, yep, so it would be in, at our April meeting that we would then kind of review those, review those bids at the council.
Looks like we need to move it twelve weeks, just to let it hold off the road.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of kind of construction, right, of the building, so, and it looks like May's second video, so it looks like there's no time to be done there.
Yeah, okay. I'll reach out to the board.
Any other comments? So, are you looking for motion to accept this proposed?
Yeah, yeah.
Proposed schedule?
Yep.
Alright, I'll look for motion to approve the preliminary schedule for the park shelter.
And send it out for bid.
And send it off the bid.
Well, that's technically over, just sending it off the bid. I'll make that motion, second.
I have a motion, second, any further discussion? I'll say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Six A, two.
Okay, so, in front of you, in the packet on page seventy-eight is a resolution. It's, so every year we do, it's my job as the city administrator to do a performance evaluation on the Public Works employees and the deputy clerk. So I did that evaluation, and I just have to say, you have a really good group of employees here. I think they're all very dedicated and they do a very good job. I don't know if you have any specific questions, but I think right now we're, just me being new, Brent being a little new, Janelle has also been here about a year and a half, and I think altogether, I think we're learning how to work together to become more efficient and, and do what's, do what's best for the city. And I think, you know, Kyle's the most senior, and I think he's been doing an amazing job, and I think we have a really good group here, and I think we're going to do good things. So, with that, I did, I did bring it to the Personnel Committee where we did review everybody more in depth, and it was their recommendation to approve a three percent increase for both Public Works employees and a three point five for the deputy clerk. We decided on that because there was just kind of that transition period where Janelle did have to take on a lot more than was expected of her. And so we just kind of wanted to do some sort of kind of reward for that.
For that, as opposed to like just a bonus?
Um, I guess we didn't really talk about a bonus.
We didn't discuss that, I don't know if we, I, we didn't discuss that part of that, doing that with the personnel department. So we had, Maggie went through their performance appraisal, they were all really good performance appraisal's. And then Maggie recommended to Personnel Committee, we should have asked, we reviewed it, we agreed with it, and then thought that the clerk, the city clerk was appropriate for that extra half percent, because she really did, really went above and beyond in twenty seventeen for what was going on, so we want to at least acknowledge that. Certainly, you know, half a percent is a huge amount, but we certainly want to acknowledge that she got dumped out with a lot of stuff, with the previous administrator gone, and with the interim administrator taking on a lot of extra responsibilities. So, we did not discuss bonus aspect, I, I don't even know if we can do that.
I've never seen like a bonus approved, but.
So that's why I didn't have to come up, we can certainly relook at that if that's what you prefer.
I think that's the more correct way to do it, but I don't, it doesn't matter. So, when you did the performance reviews, were there areas in each person's review that, where they can improve, suggestions, ways to?
Yeah, so what we did is, there was essentially two documents, I filled out one, they filled out one, and they kind of did a self-evaluation on themselves, and then I did an evaluation based on the time I had been here on them as well. And I think as part of that is kind of goals for the future, things that can be worked on, especially goals, kind of where they saw that they could improve and things that they think will help them in the future, especially training, things, like I said, areas they can improve, and so, we did go in depth.
Yeah, we tried a lot of development, personal development.
Yeah, and kind of like, like, more of a transition, because Greg Hoover, when Kyle gets his wastewater license, Greg will step aside, and so it's just kind of like, when that happens, then there'll be kind of like a shifting of duties. Like, he'll be taking more of that on, we got to make sure Brent is prepared to take on more as well. So, that was kind of a discussion that we had in that process.
Alright, I'll look for motion to approve Resolution two dash twelve dash eighteen dash four, adopt the twenty eighteen wage increase for city employees.
I'll make that motion.
Yes, I'll make that motion, second. Sorry, that's the council member. Any further discussion? I'll say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you, both for a great year, and twenty sixteen, I know it was very up and down, a lot going on.
We'll be done.
Thank you, thank you, obviously Brent also, and I'll certainly reach out to him, so thank you very much.
Six A, three, please.
Okay, so in front of you is just, probably could have gone on the consent agenda, but it's the State of Minnesota Joint Powers Agreement on behalf of the City Attorney and Police Department. There's a resolution in front of you, and then there's also a Court Data Services Discriber Amendment to CJDN Discriber Agreement on page seventy-nine. We will not, after talking to the city attorney, we will not be doing that one, we will just be doing the joint powers agreement. This is something that we've entered in, in the past, it's usually a five-year agreement, and what it does is it allows our representatives from Carver County Sheriff's Department and Carver County Attorney's Office to access the Minnesota Criminal Justice Data Communications Network on our behalf. So whenever anything comes up that we need, like that data, we're essentially saying that those organizations that represent us can have access to that database. And so that's what that, that's what that joint powers agreement is, it's just extending it another five years. And so that Resolution two point, two twelve eighteen dash five is essentially assigning Carver County and our, the Sheriff's Department and Attorney's Office the ability to do that.
I understand the joint powers agreement, but what's the court data services?
So that one, I, that one, essentially, I did, I wasn't very clear on that one either, so I did talk to the city attorney, and they looked into it a little bit, and they said that, hold on. They said that it's an agreement that they didn't feel that we needed to go into, because it would, I think, it gives them, something that would essentially cost the city money if we did enter into, hold on. I don't think that that, I think that's a new, and the, so they talked to the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension and Carver County Attorney Office and agree, agreed that the city did not need to execute the Court Data Services Agreement. That's essentially all that they said. They just felt like, so I don't, I can look into that one a little bit more, but.
I think we should maybe update that meeting.
Okay.
To explain it if need be, but, especially if it's one we have.
The, the other one, the joint powers agreement we have entered into, the other one we haven't.
So it's just so brand new.
Yeah, yep, and they, they did a review on it and said, they essentially just told me that that was one that they felt we didn't need to enter into.
Could we just check on that longer? We're not taking any action on this, it's just, this is something we've been getting every year, five years, three years, whatever the term is, and maybe we've just, we've just never done it, and it hasn't come in from us through this model.
Yeah, and the resolution just pertains to the other one. So, we can always bring that one back if we need to, and just approve the other one, for now.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, then I'll look for, excuse me, for motion approving Resolution two dash twelve dash eighteen dash five, approving the State of Minnesota Joint Powers Agreement of the city mayor on behalf of the city attorney and police department. I'll make that motion. Yeah, a motion, second.
Second.
I have a motion, second, any further discussion? I'll say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. B one.
I'm going to try and step in a little bit. So B one is a tax, tax amendment from the plant, from the city planner, this came from the Planning Commission. Essentially, the city, the, the city, oh, sorry, the Planning Commission has been looking into a tax amendment in the C one Commercial Industrial District and the C one General Commerce District, or I'm sorry, the CI, Commercial Industrial. My understanding from John Anderson, that a request from a property owner on Seventh Street, a while ago, asked to rezone his property to a different category so that he would have more flexibility for that site. I guess with that discussion, John Anderson and the Planning Commission didn't feel like the property should be rezoned, but that maybe the allowed uses and the conditional uses in the Commercial Commerce District and the Commercial Industrial District should be re-looked at to include maybe more opportunities. He felt like ours was pretty limited, and that, looking at other cities, they had more of an option. And so, they looked at that last year, they held a public hearing in January, just to kind of discuss the verbiage change, which is in your packet. It's in his memo, and then it also lists it in the, in the proposed ordinance, if you choose to amend the ordinance. It just, it, the underlined version, I'm sorry, let me try and get to that page. The underlined is, is the new verbiage, and then the crossed out is, is the elimination. So you can see that they did add quite a bit of permitted uses, and then they did add, they didn't cross out too much, they did add kind of a bigger list of items for each, for conditional and permitted uses. And so, they did hold a public hearing on that and recommended to council approval of those changes for the, for both districts. And if you look, I think this is the most recent updated map, you can see where the C one, and I apologize for not putting it in the packet, the C one in the Commercial Industrial District.
So, you're able to allow John Anderson today?
Yeah.
And could you give an indication why that property owner wanted to do this?
No, I guess he was just, he's looking, I think he has his land for sale, he's just looking to do something with it, to develop it. He doesn't, doesn't have any plans, like currently, he just has it for sale.
For potential buyers, or something.
Right.
So, what this is doing is expanding what you can do when you're zoned General Commerce District.
Right. It, it's expanded the permitted uses, if you, if you see, there were only, it looks like there were only two allowable uses before, permitted uses, and they, or, yeah, two permitted uses, and then they, but then they expanded the list. You know, for more, like banking, medical, logroom at barber, churches.
And then, there's one thing that keeps sticking out here to me, and I don't, I know we have ordinances in place for this, and I do not know what chapter one fourteen is, but why do we have permitted accessory uses? Why is specially oriented uses, accessory, as regulated by chapter one fourteen? Why is it even permitted?
I read that as they have to get a permit to do that.
Um, it has to be.
Permitted uses, it's everywhere in those things.
It has to be accessory to the permitted use, so it has to be kind of like secondary, secondary to a permitted use, is my understanding.
Can you page up just a little bit further? Okay, good question. That's all I think it to, because it was supposed to be in there, it was in, we're basically not allowing it, we're not looking for. We can follow up on that, that was in there, that was one of the parts that they could change in this, and that's maybe something we need to look at, that was existing language. John's going to start coming to more meetings when we have these things on the agenda, so he can help speak to some of these.
Yeah. Additional research.
Okay.
I think it's pretty, I think.
Changes, we have to relook at that, and we can follow up with him. What does it take to do this now, to change this ordinance, it has to go?
You, you, there's a attached ordinance amendment in, in the packet, you approve that, and then it has to go, so there's already been a public hearing on the, on the tax changes, it then goes into the newspaper, and once it goes into the newspaper, it becomes.
Okay, so the financial burden is the newspaper, okay?
Yeah.
Nothing else to codify, or to do anything else?
Um, we do a codification every five years. So, we do it in a bundle.
No, because there's a request on property, is did they cover any expenses to this, or how do you handle that?
It's because, I think it was a Planning Commission item that they decided to alter, to change, they didn't, they didn't, this guy wasn't saying, I want you to change it, so he doesn't pay for it, I guess. It was a Planning Commission decision to review it, so it is a planning expense.
Oh, I read it as the property, that the question was made by the property owner to do this.
I'll have to check with John, but he made it sound like it was a secondary, I know, thing that came out of that discussion.
Do you remember what the, do you remember how the compensation was when you were looking at those?
Did it pop up to anybody else?
My understanding was the property owner requested that, you know, people didn't change.
Yeah, I meant what the, what the definition of permitted, you know, I was, I was under the impression that that means that we would, so we were having a permit, and if they wanted to do it.
Right, that's actually the oriented thing, that happened a long time ago, and that was a permitted thing, and there were so many regulations that we stole, and you want to be away from residential, that sort of thing.
And I think cities have to be careful, and I think all cities have it in the ordinance somewhere, because you can't discriminate against those kind of organizations.
Right.
So you have to have them in your ordinance somewhere.
I mean, if there's any questions about it, make sure that the verbiage is correct.
Yeah, we can always bring it back.
Yeah, and I'm fine tampering, if we find out that it was existing tax, and if something had to clean up, along with this, I'm fine with that. I don't know how we get that information back, because I wouldn't mind approving it, checking into it, and if that's appropriate, then they can move forward. I didn't sound like the property owner was hot, heavy, or something. Yeah, I, because I think it's all things started, because that property was first way back when, there was like fuel storage tanks out there for them, for them to store fuel, and they just don't do that anymore, obviously. To hopefully just open up the market for them, that property. Alright, I, I'm fine tampering it to our next meeting, we'll get some more information on that, and then we can add that in and make those changes.
Yeah, I think you would have to go back to the Planning Commission, if, if John feels that it needs to be.
I'm sure John would have caught that and saw it, but, I think, you know, I think it was, it's just because, you know, you have to, you know, people have the right to open up businesses, you have to do that, the primary process, that's understandable.
And it's also under conditional uses too, but in order to be the conditional use, you have to apply for that too, I would, I would assume. And then, this is not specific to one property, this is going to open it up to the whole, for everybody that's zoned General Commerce District.
May I motion to table or table?
Um, I would do a motion.
Okay, I'll look for motion to table, planning B one tax amendment to the amendment title fifteen, I'll make that.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion?
I'll say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That will take us to B two.
Yeah, and I apologize, John did provide a memo on this, since I might have to defer to Eric a little bit. John explained to me that they were, the Planning Commission is kind of bringing the discussion on driveway parking area and hard surface improvements, that's the parking of recreational vehicles, kind of on the grass. I know the council had kind of asked the Planning Commission to review that, they've been reviewing it, I think they're kind of coming to kind of, they're not really.
It's a pretty, there was, there was a lot of discussion at the Planning Commission meeting about this topic, and along with that is the topic of light throughout the community, and I'm not sure we were actually able to really make a decision that night as to what to do. And the discussion went forward as to, you know, what is the council's thoughts and feelings on one aid light, and then parking of trailers or, you know, boats and that on driveways. And if we do make significant changes to the zoning ordinance, or where the planner was assuming that there would be quite a bit of enforcement cost that would be coming down the line. There's a lot of people that are, that are out of compliance, potentially would be out of compliance with those changes made. I think it's a, it's a pretty political issue on top of that, and wanted to kind of bring it forward to maybe the work session to kind of talk about where we are at with that process. I just, we just, I, I think we just need to, there's an easy direction.
I thought there was something that we had in place that said you can't park it on the grass, it had to be on some sort of, I don't know, pervious.
Yeah, what we're finding when we did additional research is that a lot of the newer neighborhoods have covenants that, that limit it, but we don't have anything specifically in the code that says you can't do it. And so, we were, I guess the city planner and I sat down, and we were, wanted the Planning Commission to discuss kind of what that would look like if we did change the code. And so, um, we were, I guess the city planner and I sat down and we were, wanted the planning commission to discuss kind of what that would look like if we did change the code. Um, I've been through it in another community, and it is quite the topic. Um, and I think, like, if it does get changed, um, like any ordinance change, it's all about education, just kind of, but I think Mayor is unique that these covenants are in place, that, that, um, have that extra layer of regulation on some neighborhoods. But it's like, it's just kind of like Eric said, it's a, it's a tough topic. And I think what John said is they're looking for kind of more guidance on, on-
So they're looking for a joint meeting with us, or they're looking for us to have a work session that we're laying, or it seems to make sense to meet with them.
Yeah. Right.
You know, this, I think that would be appropriate for this discussion.
Mm-hmm.
I agree, it's gonna be a very hot topic, and, um, I think we get the message out there ahead of time, which is what we're thinking about.
I'd actually get some people to come to a meeting there.
Right, right, we might be able to get somebody to this, because a lot of good reason to have a hard surface, where you just park on the side of a, a house and have a hard surface. You know, weeds growing up underneath it, it just, I mean, everything looks a lot better. Um, things can be oil, things can leak, and what John needs to be accomplished, we don't want it to be around. So there's good reason for it, I mean, from that point, so. There, there another interesting part of the ordinance was, um, actually, right now, you can actually park cars in that yard. I think it's a great idea to have a work session with the planning, put it out there, with the planning commission. Okay, so are you trying to?
Yeah. Sounds good.
As soon as we can.
Yeah, we can do that.
Anything else on that?
No.
All right, then we'll go to C1.
Okay, so, C1, um, the fire chief did provide a, kind of a cost estimate for, um, this is something that was budgeted in their kind of capital improvements, their turnout gear replacement, um, which is done every 10 years. Um, so this is just, um, from the fire chief requesting approval for them to go ahead with the purchase of the turnout gear.
It took the quotes more than what he, he was like, a budgeted cost of purchase.
Right, I think it was a hundred thousand budget, and, and he's, it's eighty-five thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars and seventy cents.
So, I'll look for a motion to purchase turnout gear, um, based on Rod's spreadsheet here, eighty-five thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars and seventy cents.
We'll make that motion.
Motion for a second.
Second.
Motion second, need further discussion.
What's a bunker? Yep. Dying pants with your coat.
All right, the one in session, all right, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That will move to C2, please.
Okay, so, uh, in front of you is a resolution on behalf of the fire department, um, for the appointment of Scott Gustafson. Um, they, the fire department is requesting that, um, the city approve him to start as a firefighter with the mayor of fire department. Um, upon approval, um, they did, Scott did pass all the requirements for the department, and the fire chief is recommending his appointment.
Motion to approve, that's motion two dash twelve dash eighteen dash six.
Mm-hmm.
Motion for a second. Motion second, need further discussion. All right, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. C3.
Okay, so in front of you is the fire department policy manual. Um, it, it still needs a little cleaning up, but we're, we're kind of at least getting started on this. Um, some of the major changes is the, are the officers, highlighted in blue, just chief one, chief two, four captains, and one secretary, and two lieutenants. Um, and then, to fill vacancies, it did say election process before, we're switching that to selection. Um, we did update some of the duties a little bit. Um, and then, also, what we added was rescue reserve members. So, um, Rod had done some research with other communities, and, and there are, he did say that there's some interest in, in, for the fire department to have reserve members, and so he wanted to add in, um, some requirements and duties and responsibilities for those, um, those members that, that are approved to, um, hold those positions. Um, and so that's kind of another change. Um, so in front of you is just the, the policy to be amended at this time. Again, it needs a little bit more work, but at least we're kind of getting some things updated in it, at, at this time.
Rod, Rod, what about this?
Um-
Or you and Rod together?
Me and Rod did, yeah.
You guys did together?
Yep.
I promise I don't know what changed.
The blue.
So you, all, all that was added?
All this was added or changed.
All right, and I understand, so like, one duty of the chief, one?
Yep, so it used to just be chief, I apologize, I should have done a crossing out, and, and I can get that to you. Um, most of the blue was just, yeah, they did.
So, have your, your parades changed, and then like five lieutenants, all was added?
That was added.
Oh, okay.
Because lieutenants are new positions, so they probably hadn't, they left there.
All right, that makes, are we approving line machines now, or are we just gonna wait till this document?
Um, I think Rod wanted the new reserve, rescue reserve, or wanted it approved to, to at least get the rescue reserve part amended, so he could get that process moving along, um, and then, and then start working-
Right, old captain position.
There's, there's some other things in here that need to be addressed.
Yeah, there are, and, and so-
Number six, you're talking about impeachment of a, of a department member by two-thirds vote of the members, oh, you know, that's, that is not correct. Um, you're not a member of the mayor of fire department, you're an employee of the city, um, so that needs to be changed.
Yeah, I, I did notice some things that, um, that also need to be changed in here.
That's always been in there.
This has always been in there, yeah. It's, it's old, it's an old document, so.
Mm-hmm.
So they can't, how, how do they remove someone from office, if they become the council?
Councilor.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that would seem to be no different than letting go or council. So would it be this two-thirds votes, and that, which, that breaks it to council, or can one person, would one person say, hey, I don't like this, I want to bring it to council? Is that the intent of it, to try to-
And maybe, you know-
-get through some of that down there?
I think maybe I rushed bringing this to you guys. Um, I mean, I did add in what was asked to be added, but then I probably should have figured out a little bit more before.
All right, let's hold on, I'm sure once Rod gets back, he can meet with him again.
Yep.
Um, it sounds like he wants to get it, move it along, so number eight can be put up on that, what is a rescue reserve men member anyways?
I can-
You can go.
I can talk about that.
Okay.
Um, obviously, because of my dark grasp in sheriff's office, um, I can no longer function as a firefighter with the, with the, because I just will not be practically clear with the emergency fire department, I can't. Um, I think that I do have skills that, that I can still render services to the fire department, and one of those, especially as a emergency manager. And, um, that was, was discussion with, with the city, must see if there was some way for me to continue on as a firefighter, or continue on in a role of the fire department, not stretching.
Perfect, okay.
And then, and then somebody else as well, so.
Yeah.
No, um, I think Northern America's, where this policy really has, has come from, because they have a research program, um, it's for people that, um, may not necessarily have all the time to be, you know, a full-fledged firefighter, but yet are there enough to attend trainings and, um, to be that second alarm, you know, if we were to come in.
Correct, no, I think that's the condition of the policy, yes, and again, one person, or anyone else, that may-
So you would go on call?
No, I wouldn't. Um, I would be, like I said, I, my hopes would be to remain here as a, as a safety officer kind of position, or with an emergency management position, with emergency.
But someone else could go on call.
With somebody else, yeah.
Someone else, the way the policy might not, but the policy, the intent of the staff, so they'll go on calls.
And, um, right now, there is one, there's one member that's-
Debbie Hill, she-
She's a-
It's medical, you know, like- There's, there's a lot of people that work out of the city.
Yeah.
So if they would, they could come during the day, and they would, she would learn better her calls than a lot of tenants that we do, fire, structured fires.
So if I was like to table this, so Rod, um, can we look through, take, um, check out some of those numbers, so I'll look for a motion to table this, to table the mayor of fire department policy manual.
No.
Motion for a second.
Second.
Motion second, all fair, sorry, further discussion. All fair, say aye.
Aye.
Alex Dean, taking, under that policy, yes, that's fair enough, and opposed. Motion carries. All right, that'll take us to public work, D1.
Mayor, members of the council. Staff is looking for a motion approving the replacement of the city's 2014 S590 skid steer loader. Staff is proposing the purchase of a new 2018 S650 Bobcat skid steer loader. The loader is due for replacement every four years, according to the public work CIP. The skid loader is one of the most important pieces of equipment that the city owns. Staff uses the skid steer for numerous tasks, including snow removal, park projects, lift station maintenance, large deliveries, and compost site maintenance. In order to receive the best trade-in value, the city needs to rotate equipment on a routine basis to prevent high hours and costly breakdowns. The skid loader that the city currently owns was purchased in 2014, has about four hundred, well, it's actually five hundred hours of runtime on it now, and is no longer under factory warranty. Staff is proposing to purchase the new S650 skid steer loader from Lonno Equipment of Norwood in the amount of fifteen thousand one hundred dollars. The S650 skid steer loader is three times, is three sizes larger than the city's current S590 skid steer loader. Staff would like to move to a larger machine in order to have increased lifting capabilities, higher lifting capabilities, and more horsepower. If the new machine is not purchased, the value of the city's current skid loader will drop, and staff will have to deal with more routine, routine maintenance overall. I got a few quotes there, um, different models, Bobcat models, I always got a comparable one from Bobcat, or from, uh, Kubota, from Arnold's there. Um, we budgeted twenty grand, and it came in at fifteen thousand, so. Any questions? The purchase price of the current one? Purchase price of the current one? Have my mental- We paid, see, back in 2014, our skid loader was actually the same size as the S650, and we downsized to the S590. And we, we would like to increase it just because of our, we've been taking a lot more care of the compost site, and we're turning compost piles and everything, and this machine just isn't quite, has enough oomph in it to get those, you know, to make it efficient to turn these piles and everything, and also to haul the brush and stack the brush. So, at that time, when I first started, I thought the skid loader was this huge for what we use it for, but now it's like, okay. The current one doesn't quite lift quite the, tall enough to get in the back of the big dump trucks, you really gotta get it up there, and this one would be much more easy to do that. Um, so the, we traded in the old one for twenty grand, and we purchased the new skid steer, the one we have, for fifteen thousand, or sixteen thousand, call it. So, it's kind of reversed, we downsized, now we're upsizing, or upgrading, so.
All the accessories from the 590.
Everything will fit perfectly, yep.
I just told you.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not gonna have room.
I wish I once. Where's your window?
When you, because I think, I remember too, when we downsized, we thought it would be easier to clean the sidewalks, because those-
Yeah, well, yeah, and actually, it's nice because our winter tires are the same size, it'll, it'll fit on our, on the new skid steer too, so we can use those tires. It's a little bit wider, but not, not much at all.
So the wider bucket isn't going-
It's not a wider bucket either, same size bucket.
Okay, so you'd be able to clean the sidewalks just as easily as what you do now.
Yeah. Yeah, get those out of the way, and that'd be so much easier.
Maybe a couple of years.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That is only a couple of years, I guess, but then he'll want another new one.
Four years.
And I'm telling you, I think this is, I'm, I'm glad to see this, I know we discussed this thing about it, this way we should be doing our equipment, keep that trade-in value, um, even if we went with the S650, fifteen thousand one hundred dollars, that's, that comes to thirty-seven seventy-five per year that we spent on the last one we had, that's fairly reasonable. We were just ready to down to thirty-one dollars and forty-six cents an hour, so the four hundred and eighty hours you used it, so I think that was definitely the way.
That's, that's with light snowfalls, the old skid steer, when I first started, I put two hundred hours in it just by myself that year, because we had so much snow, so we've had pretty light snowfalls the last few years, so, yep. It, it could have been easily close to a thousand hours right now, so, but the five hundred hour mark, I've been calling around, and that's kind of the prime time to, to do it, so.
I think it's the, the way a capital improvement plan should work too. It was in there, budgeted for it, so I think it's awesome that it's-
It's getting good numbers budgeting now going forward, for every year, how much you need to set aside for each one.
Right.
You know, it's fifteen thousand, about fifteen thousand every four years.
Yep.
It's easier from that standpoint. As far as upgrading to, two size or three sizes, I can't really speak to that, um, it's absolutely, it feels like a big jump. Um, it seems like, even though the one we had was so, I mean, so wrong, it should have come to us, and we'd get a bigger one for you to help you with your job.
Mm-hmm.
It seems like a big jump to me, but I can't, I, the motor's not my business, I can't really speak to it.
Mm-hmm.
Seems like a big jump to me, so it comes to me on plan, I'll, the other one?
Yeah, well-
Power distribution working for you?
It's, it's three sizes, and I say three sizes, the, there's a model smaller than this, but it does, it has a vertical lift and not a radial lift, so the vertical lift, you get farther away from the Bobcat as you lift up, so dumping in the back of trucks isn't practical. This one has it, so you're even all the way up, and you can dump these in the back of trucks. And then, uh, the S, the S595 is actually new, so it's, it's just kind of a, it's the next model up comparable to what we got with more horsepower and more hydraulic pressure and higher lifting capabilities, so. If I would have known the one we have, I mean, you can dump in the back of big trucks, but I mean, you really gotta know what you're doing to make sure you get it right, so. This one is just, it'll be a lot more practical for us, and it's the only really heavy lifting thing that we have, so. As far as motors.
Fifty percent more of the cost.
Right.
That's a ten thousand, fifteen thousand, which is-
Okay, so what's the proposal, I mean, what?
I want to get the S650, correct?
Correct. Yep.
It's fifteen thousand one hundred.
Fifteen thousand one hundred. That's with a new bucket, too.
That's with a new bucket?
Yep, new bucket.
All right, so, no other questions? Or someone would like to make a motion?
We'll make that motion.
To purchase the S650?
Yep.
A little, or fifteen thousand one hundred. We have a motion and a second, need further discussion. All right, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle. All right, that'll take us to reports. Eric, can you report on?
I'm Community Addict, I'm here, sure.
And I, uh, I'm trying to think where our last, we skipped the last meeting, so I think we've had a personnel committee session, we saw our draft minutes in there. I think major team up, a big, a big part of it was we, um, up, big, uh, big part of it was the, um, performance praise also, and everyone saw that, the draft minutes, I don't know any questions, so, yeah, it seems a long ago.
Actual start.
Yeah, right. Alright.
Question. When you, um, report that ten percent and you put it-
Yeah.
Five thousand of it in park equipment. How does that work with the park board's budget? Cause they didn't budget for that ten percent, right?
And that was something, so I did, um, I was looking at what we did in the past, and so I based it on the, the algorithm that we used in the past. I guess I assumed that that's kind of where we put those items, if you want them somewhere else, we can definitely do that, cause I, we, I looked at last year's and the year before, it looks like we've been contributing to, um, um, the drug task force to pay for their services, because that's a approved, um, approved item that we can spend the money on, and then-
Did you ever run it past the standard?
I did, she, I, my understanding is you're supposed to do it the year before, like, so the money that you raised-
Last year.
Last year goes towards items from last year. And so the money is then put into funds for, yeah, for the previous.
That gets you covered in charge.
Right, that gets, yeah. Um, otherwise, I think if you want to, and I can clarify with her, I think you can save it from year to year as well.
So what I'm saying now is that the park board should end up then with about five thousand extra dollars to work with.
Right.
Because the staff for the city is going to allocate that money. Then they didn't have to use their budgeted money or their tax dollars to pay for that.
Right, and I guess, um, maybe that's something we can talk about, if that's where we want to be putting the money, um, it just, um, what was done before, that's probably not the topic of the day, but how do you-
It should actually be, yeah, it should actually be allocated to something that can be accounted for, like, this is how much accounts for the drug task force, this is the equipment that we bought, the park board, but.
Yeah, and I can bring that back to you, um, and you said, so one thousand fifty was what the drug task force cost last year, um, I believe it's going up this year, um, but then, the, I don't know, I believe, you want like, I think it was one of the, but-
Sure.
You want more of like a facility purchase, I mean, but this is what our money was for.
Yeah. I feel like there was just something written down, but then the park budget never saw that actual money.
Right, right.
And so we spent tax dollars, really, and I feel like the money that is being allocated to them to buy that equipment is just kind of in the general budget somewhere, cause it never got moved into that budget.
Right, yeah, and I can make sure, um, for what, after this year, we can, I'll be-
How it works.
We'll give that check for the next, uh, month.
Right, any other questions? And with that lead in, um, from Tyson, you want to acknowledge and thank the baseball, the mayor baseball club for their contribution, um, to both the private department and the city here. Alright, uh, without anything else, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Remove.
Motion, motion, wait a second.
A second.
Yeah, a motion, a second, can we say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Then we'll just jump right in, if you wanna pass those down. Alright, we'll call the meeting to order, uh, the city health workshop. And we'll, let's start right off with the dog work. Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Computer works a good far.
Um, so we have, um, some residents that wasn't telling, that kind of made the situation, um, you pick it up and you kind of start, and then I'll kind of go into what our four United States and kind of-
If you don't mind, if you could turn that on and then just state, state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Carrie Zimmerman, sixteen oh five Pine Cove Lane in Maryland. Um, our daughter and her husband currently live in Washington, they're going to be, um, they had to sell their home and come to move in with us, um, because of a medical issue with the husband that has prevented him from working or driving since August, so they could no longer afford their house. So they're gonna move in with us, and we currently have two dogs, and they also have two dogs. One of their dogs is a neutered male boxer mix, is about seven years old, and Makayla is an English bull dog, and it's about eleven years old. All of our dogs are, they live indoors, um, they never live outdoors. They don't and we don't ever allow our dogs to go outside or chase or run, um, outside of our fence, we do a fence yard, that is, this year. We're not sure how long they're going to have to stay with us, it will depend on how long it takes to get the medical condition under control, and until they can get enough finances to buy their own place, we're hoping not more than a year.
How was that, sorry, it, my computer locked up. Uh, in your package, there is this, this article that we have, uh, for dogs, and right now, um, we do have a limitation in the order, and we're pretty adult animals, uh, and those adult animal, uh, and so right now, um, we're, we're kind of, uh, we're kind of a little bit with the term order, um, I didn't really know what the name is, he thought, uh, he thought, um, like three, kind of over, if you, if you, like, were adult animals, but he kind of suggested bringing it to a workshop, see what your dogs are, just counting, um, he thinks three is a good number, to, to maybe bring it to a setting, for the discussion on increasing that number. I know some, that's the last video, um, they, they had a condition that said with council approval, you can get, um, like a, like a variant. And, and so, it, but our call doesn't have that variance, or that, that variance in it, that's just with council approval, and so I don't know if you're willing to put something like that in there, like, for special circumstances, uh, with council approval, we're okay adding one more, like, four, um, you can choose three, and then with council approval, I don't know, I mean, there's, there's a lot of ways.
Yeah, exactly. Agreed. Thank you for being responsible.
I'm being responsible, yeah, and as far as I, as far as I concerned, we're not supposed to, yeah, so. Two of the dogs, they're not in real good health, so. I, I, my view is, I don't, we have a three, I'd say we leave a three, I don't think there's a reason to change that, but I like the idea of putting some sort of attraction, or variance, or hardships, or, or these sorts of things, or if someone's parents passed away, they have an allowance from the state, and if that happens for them before, I mean, there are certainly reasons, if, if a homeowner, and they afford their own, because they're wealthy, that I don't think, but I think for these, I would like to write it, to give some exception, or variance per council's approval, um, you know, probably still giving up, uh, license, yeah, with the understanding, if it does become issued, we have to deal with that, again, and come back and talk about it, neighbors are, if their dog are getting out or barking or, or, you know, you know, but, you know, I'm, I'm certainly open to something, I think that would go away, which do we have in there?
So can't we do a variance to any ordinance that we have? Does it have to be written in there before we can do it?
I don't think you can do a variance, like, I mean, it's only, just, uh, well, like, you have to have, um, or, I usually, like, you have to, but it's kind of, cause like, even in your Tony coat, like, you have to follow, and anything outside of that is probably a budget, so it's kind of like, I don't know, my understanding is, um, and, we're starting
They will be here February twenty-second. Everything had to like move really rapidly.
I can, I can probably freshen that, because council, yeah, interaction, or structures left, we should be able to do, in my next meeting, to at least, to put a good position to it, before it hits, to work through something, I don't know, so, yeah, we really get that passed through, to the door, so. We'll have to try to figure something out, maybe talk with John if there's something we can do, um, if, if, if that's the intent that we're gonna go for, and council's in agreement with that, I think we can probably work something out, now we're, if we're opposed or we're split, I guess we may have a harder time, but I think, we should be able to work something out, um, and I understand, so, this ordinance, yeah, sometimes, uh, we're likely, by, um, we've been charged, then you could, like, any, or do we get, however, if it's not changed, then you have the dog, extra dog, something could happen, you know, until that gets, gets, uh, back. We'll try, we'll try, we'll try, we'll try to decide how long we want, we've tempered, you know, if it's for six months, is it for a year, or, if it's every six months, we want to back in to reassess it and see where we're at, another six months, I mean, we'll have to figure out wording, how, what we want to see in this, and I, I think it's appropriate to have some, I know, there's always hardships, things come up, so.
I just can't bring the rest in.
Well, well, we didn't want to get busted, I mean, we didn't want to say, yeah, bring your dogs and then something happens, you know, yeah.
And our daughter's a real self-aware, stickler for rules, you know, so, she's still gonna worry about, yeah, what we're gonna tell her, I mean, like I said, they're leaving on the nineteenth and starting to drive out here, in you guys' opinion, if we have four dogs, what are, I don't know what your timeframe is, like, two months or whatever, to do something?
Well, I believe we're, I'm not gonna call this.
Maggie should be able to reach out to you in the next two days after she talks to our planner, and see what we can do, and maybe as early as our next call's, maybe two weeks from tonight, um, but if we have to go through other public hearings, yeah, it's like, it, it'll take longer, but hopefully, if that's the case, we can figure something out at the next meeting to allow hardship or, or temporary.
And you sweep two dogs out at a time, so.
I don't have a problem with the way that we're probably gonna change it, I-
Okay, so yeah, Maggie will be in contact now, and, and, can you get her to start working on jobs, start working from language, from proposed language to actual sort of temporary or variance language to this?
Okay, well, great, thanks.
When we should come back, the twenty-third, or?
Twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth, I was wrong on the date.
Absolutely, we'd love to have you at every meeting. Feel free.
Can we post this section on the webpage and show everybody, like, people come in and do it the right way? Love it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Maggie will be in touch, thank you.
I really like, I, I don't feel like we should change it, but I like the variance.
Well, we have three, I, 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 two cats and one dog.
Right.
Now that, now that, should be, should be, should be, three eyes, so.
So, we could work in there, um, or qualify for a variance variance.
Can we also see what others could be like doing? I, I'd be curious what others could be have too.
Well, we have, we have people that are fostering dogs, and they've done, uh, the last ten years, and they have, you know, one, and one kind of, you know, in all, I mean, it's a neighbor's, I think, what you love about that, and, and, you, you're there at the time, but we're, 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 you know, just, we're using the top of the board, that's maybe, that, just, I don't know, I mean, I'll, I'll- Yeah, yeah, those are things we don't want to, we don't want to stop people from fostering dogs either, but it becomes an issue.
Or four.
Four, if it's gonna be an issue, they can't, they gotta do something, I think.
Um, yeah, no, just giving to you, we're sort of, that's a good, but, her call approval, um, yeah, one more, one more.
Yes, that, that is.
Yeah, do we want to vary from our ordinance, ordinance, just because someone wants to get another dog? Variances could be because of hardships or things like this that happen, with the parent dice, this will be a hardship, but if someone comes in and says, you know, we bought a puppy, are we, are we gonna give everybody a variance?
I think there's a lot of people that are worried, you know, or they might have three cats and a dog, I mean, that, cause I already have two, so it's like, I have a cat and a dog, so I'd probably only go have one more dog, or cat, or cat.
Alright, wanna start working?
Right, my guess.
Alright, can we, anything else? Oh, real quick, and I'll talk about dogs, just cause there was some Facebook posts, and I was asked to comment on it, about people not picking up after waste, um, seems to be an issue, again, we can maybe put that on the Facebook page, and remind people, um, their neighbors are getting upset about it, um, their neighbors take time to clear the sidewalk for people to walk in, be able to move around, and their dogs are leaving waste out of them, who could, um, I encourage people to come into the meeting. I encourage people to come into the meeting, and they did, and I, someone specifically asked me to comment on it, so I did, typically I don't, on some of those, um, Facebook So if we can add something, that would be great.
Well, I only have one bag and my dog goes twice, I do come back for it, like, I have to go home and get a bag and come back. Which I do, like, olive cream.
Community, community center policy. Under condition.
Um, so, I, you know, I've listed our new policy that we wrote, and in previous policy it had, and it, and maybe it's so basic, I'm not, you know, in the previous one, there was a vendor's stipulation that said you could only go with local vendors for your, like, weddings, and, like, singing house bars, and, and, I don't, you know, um, we did get something- we did get somebody, oh, I think there was a wedding, that, in fourteen, that they wanted children to be out outside of the city, and then there's another vendor who emailed me saying that he was lined up for two of them, and noticed that, kind of, cool of policy that we don't allow outside, and so, I guess, my question...
For alcohol?
No.
I thought it was just alcohol, or, like, what?
I think, um, there's, there's, there should be alcohol, you can go with anybody for food.
Uh, assuming, or alcohol, they wanted to use...
Locals, and then we knew that they were lined up.
Right, I was assuming they wanted to use local liquor license, we, we permitted them, we allowed those, we've done the background checks, we did what we needed to do, so we know it's a shitty...
And they know they're insured, they have a warrant shop.
So, I'm assuming that's true, so...
Yeah, I mean, like, we didn't, you know, some caterers that show their daughter, you know, that you were going to hear, was that? I don't remember his last name, but Joe, um, when he was, you know, German, he was a, I mean, I, 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 I,
Well, they mail a check.
They mail a check.
So will you have an accounting of when you transfer, or when you pay that bill, electronic?
Yeah, that's what they have, that's what...
And if it's before the tenth, I don't have a problem waiving the late fees. Isn't it the tenth that cut off?
Yeah, they probably received, one day was, they received on the eleventh, and the other day it was the twelfth, so it's a matter...
The city, not your bank?
No, the city, the city. Yeah, I ran into the same thing with our garbage collector, I was paying online, and I don't pay enough attention to my bill and also my late fees, you know, finally after two or three months, I realized that my bill was, were quarters, I called them, they said, but, we should know if you have direct deposit, it goes there, they can't allow to make the direct deposit, they have to kind of check and mail it to me, and often I was getting late fees, they were coming late.
That happens, isn't it?
So...
So after the first month, it happened, and you noticed it, how it happened again?
That's, it's, we, we called the bank back and said, what's going on with this, and they said, well, we'll look into it.
The bank did it again.
It happened again.
The bank did it again. So, okay, and at that point...
Because it had to mail, so it takes a day to two days.
We're, we're scheduling it to be, you know, a good week before the, um, before the check, the, the check due.
So you worked on that?
My last check, you guys, it came on like the first, you know, so...
Which is, well, that is, was the late on the tenth. Yeah, if I, if I can see something from the bank that says it was given to them, or released from them before the late date, I don't have a problem to...
I, I can, I can see if the bank, I can see if the bank will, can, you know, um...
Um, the other issue, I think, addressed it, sure, we noted.
Yeah, I struggled, it happened twice, but, at both times, if you sent your emails, they're less to respond. My initial thought was, the city has no stake in any of that, I mean, if, if the bank doesn't accept it now, that's not our, like, so, however, if you responded back to the bank, or responded back to me, or responded back to you, so, we, yeah, so, we, the city that responds, and they shut up. I, I, it's, it's, no, it's, it's the matter of, it's the mail, it was, it was an email check that posted, I was too busy, and I was, uh, okay, so, nothing's changed, so, uh, you, you should make it, you know, like, try...
And then you just changed your date that it's mailed, so you allow for any delayed It's cheaper because you don't pay the same fee.
There you go.
Well, no, I, I do the same thing.
Yeah, so you have to have a red check, you know, and we'll give you a turn over.
Well, I get checks like that for pay for courses all the time from our clients.
Don't you need to be four, that date?
I, I would, I would tell you, I would tell you, it was, it was...
We don't have the check, we have a copy of the check, you know, we'll have a cut.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you, you, if, yeah, you copy the check, you'll see that the date, the date that the check was dated from the bank. Yeah, if there's any way to tell, I guess, for the transfer, or, or, can you print, can you print copies of the checks?
No, you got to print it from your bank, but I should go get the date that we...
Yeah, I get that, I can print it.
Should I stamp them? Or make them into, or whatever, if you, if they don't, if I don't get them in the office before, or on the tenth, or even, you know, and then they get, they automatically, they send it to the...
Absolutely, so why would the bank take any accountability to, to the mail? So if the bank got it electronically, cut their check like they've been doing for the last two years and put it in the mail, why would they, because they want to continue to keep these stuff?
Okay.
Well, and it's kind of what puts you in the tryst of, I don't know, if it's ours or theirs.
Yeah, that's something I've...
No, if, if it's an electronic transfer, it should come over with a check.
No.
It's not, they can't do that, it has to come out of paper check.
About the A C H, you wanna set that up?
I, I don't like to go, there's somebody else to control online estate, that's why, but, 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 I'm able to say, hey, the city, this amount on the state, that's what the city decides. I don't know. To me, I, I, I can really, I just, it's not a big deal, it's just the fact that, you know, my bank is willing, would, would have been willing to refund that money, had the city, has got, had the city followed up on my request to say, hey, this is what's going on, you can tell me what this is, I don't remember what the language of the emails were, but nobody, nobody got back.
And I know there was follow-up email, I, I was copying, I, I know there was a follow-up email.
Sure, they closed it out early, so, I mean, it's only, you need to have, we need to get a good year.
So the bank may not have been in contact, actually, but, yeah, the bank may not have been in contact, but you did send out, they don't inquire about it, and, and you didn't get back on that, so I get that. I, um, I thought I heard earlier that you were taking some responsibility for, you should have paid the phone bill or not, somewhere like that, not paying the late fee and this and that, so I, from that aspect, I'd be willing to split it, uh, to do a first month on that, you know, I think we have to accept, I think we, we can accept some accountability for not getting back, but I think if you could accept some, I would be fine splitting it, um, but, whatever, whatever, you know, I, I don't know, what, what do you think?
Well, I don't think we can decide a year, you're gonna have to have your family, your boys come in, and get up to the podium, like, you know, so, make sure your kids are cute,
What are thoughts on, I, it's not, I mean, it's certainly, you know, precedent on this, I mean, if it's by this way, and the mail service is not rebu-, like I said, my initial thought was, we have to be responsible for this. I think, I think we do now, I think we do, but anyway, if you didn't get back to me...
If there was a follow-up from the city, I could have went back to the bank and said, hey, the city's not gonna refund this, where are you gonna do it? And that's it now. What are thoughts?
Well, I mean, I'm kind of like where you're at, I mean, it's like fifty, fifty, you know, but it's, it's not...
We can actually, I don't know, work session.
It's just a tough situation to be in.
Any comment, I mean, we don't, you don't recall it, do you, recall the emails from Eric?
I do, uh, I'll do it, I...
No, we may not have gotten from the bank, I, I get that, the bank may not have...
And, and it's possible that it, I don't know, I don't know, I don't...
But if we can take the accountability from the folks from there, I mean, we got emails from Eric, I was copying them, um, so we know that, so, um, I don't know, I don't know. I'd be willing to split it.
I'll, I'll find checks later.
Okay. Does that get you something up where you're looking for?
That's fine.
Okay, now we'll just bring it to council, and I'll let you decide what you want to end, council, or what session are we discussing, or, or how you want to report on it.
For emails, that's just making, like, acknowledging the email, is that, or is that not even a, an issue?
I have a firm account, so I, I don't want to say there's concerns right now, but, I mean, they're working on this specific instance, but I, I think they do a fair little bit, trying to get it back to people, a, a good job getting back to people, so, um...
I mean, I can't, I mean, it's...
I'm not, I'm not blaming anyone, I just, you know, and I do the same thing at work, where you don't respond, and it's like, do you send them now? And it's like, oh, yeah, I probably should have just acknowledged.
But then to that point, you understand how I do a lot, too.
Well, yeah, you look back.
Yeah, it's down, once you get off, off that first page, it's gone, it's...
Yeah, and that's what you send, like, that friendly reminder, just turn this back on the copy you sent back.
Yeah, yeah.
Just look at it.
Okay, so, you'll check into more of that, decide what you want to, yeah, yeah, I bet we can try to see that, see that, see where, what email address it got sent to, um, it was a US name. Oh, oh, they sent it, it's a mail.
Yeah.
Oh, 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 I thought, I tried, email, I thought email, they sent it, oh.
They sent a copy of it, so, yeah, so, yes, okay, yeah, we may not have that, but, that's still...
Can we move to field, and everything's updated on the website? Because then we change it, or, or, it's coming here now?
Yeah, yeah.
So we're still, oh, no, your box, so, so we don't, post office to nowhere.
Post office tomorrow, um, you ship it down to the Atlas, and then it gets registered, and then it would probably come back, but, probably, I don't...
You know, you never know, because that's a legal change. Oh, it would have gone to the address that the check's going to, oh, because you put, yeah, you put the address for the... So, you know, that's a little bit...
Um, so, I forgot, I should have updated on that, but I attended that communications conference, uh, for the Minnesota State, it was a two-day conference, it was excellent, they had excellent presenters, um, and I told Maggie that I put something together to share, the information that I got, um, I didn't, yeah, but I will, and I'm also not I can't do another twenty-first, eight thirty-five, I'm gonna be, the twenty-seventh. It can be, this is Wednesday? Oh, that's great, Thursday? I'm okay, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday? Tuesday?